Thank you everyone for joining us for our special meeting. And before we start, I want to start with something I said at our pre-pre-meeting of these two boards. It is my goal and hope that all of us can work together better. And I want to try and do whatever we can to help to that end. We can disagree, but as long as it's, "Come on down, Tony." As long as it's respectful, I mean, we're not going to agree on everything, but I mean, I think at the end of the day, we all have the town's best interests at heart. And I believe that about every single person in this room and every, probably every person, most of the people watching. So that's just my little spiel to start. And we're here to discuss Article 35. And some of our board had questions about it, so...
You have to press the mic, it has to be green for you to speak.
Okay, so I guess we're different rules in here. You have to press the button to speak, and if your green light's on, then you're heard. If it's not, you're not. So I will turn it over to whoever is going to lead us and present us on the article.
Well, I was just, I wasn't planning on presenting. I was here to answer questions. So what are the concerns that you guys have about...
People can't hear you if you don't press on your green light.
So what are the... I was told that the Select Board had concerns about the article that was submitted in February. So what are those concerns?
Okay, so I guess I'll open up to my board. If anyone has any questions or concerns, who wants to start us off?
I mean, I could start us off.
Hit your button, Nick.
I'm happy to start us off, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the overarching question that we were hoping to discuss tonight is just around the intent between moving the things that were approved under, by right, to special permit. And the, I guess, for lack of a better term, justification for that, given the intent of the mixed-use district and how it's presented at a town meeting in January. So I guess if we could start there, it'd be great.
Would you want me to?
How about if I start, and you can correct me if I say something that's wrong? First of all, the Planning Board did vote unanimously in favor of this amendment. And we did that because we feel it's really important that the town has this protection that the special permit offers us. We do not believe that it goes against the intent of the mixed-use zoning district. We believe one of the major things about the mixed-use zoning business, the major intent was to allow much more flexibility of use at those properties. And it opened up a whole lot of uses that could not be done there ever before. And that was the main intent, because it allowed for a completely different kind of development. These particular uses, hotels, supermarkets, performance theaters, food halls, restaurants, motels, hotels, all those types of uses, they are particularly impactful and specifically can have impacts on neighboring properties and neighboring businesses. And we are able, through the special permit process, to help mitigate those impacts in a more comprehensive way. And it also, and I think this is part of the concern that you all have, because the special permit is discretionary, it does frankly give us a little bit more leverage to try and get at those mitigations. One of the things that was discussed a lot at town meeting is we looked at the success of the Third Ave Development, which everyone agrees is wonderfully successful. And we'd like to sort of replicate, not exactly replicate, but we'd like to kind of do something similar here. But the main difference between the Third Ave Development and this one is that the Third Ave Development was owned by, has one property owner. So that one property owner was responsible for all the mitigation. They had to have a holistic approach to mitigation that included everything. They were responsible for the whole thing. And a lot of the mitigation was done upfront because of that, and that's why it worked so well. This, through no one's fault, is very different, because there are many, many different property owners. And each property owner can only be held responsible for mitigating their impact. And my concern as a Planning Board member is that with many things, as with many things, the whole is often bigger than the sum of its parts. And I'm very concerned that if we are not very careful about mitigation in that area, which is already stressed from a traffic and parking standpoint, we may end up with something that looks like a bigger version of the Woburn Mall. Sorry if there's anybody who lives in Woburn here. I don't mean to trash Woburn. But mitigation is really important. And through the special permit process, the town has a better bargaining position to do that. And I also want to comment that it's been suggested that the special permit process is particularly onerous, difficult, time-consuming, and that there's, that injects uncertainty into everything because it is discretionary. But the special permit process is actually not a particularly onerous process. Because we were hearing these criticisms, we actually asked our staff to go back and look at some history. And basically, it means one additional meeting. One additional meeting in front of Planning Board in order to get the special permit. And given that these are very impactful uses, and that they can have negative impacts on their neighbors if they're not really properly controlled, I don't think one extra meeting in front of Planning Board is a lot to ask. Planning Board is tasked with making this work. So we had this broad, sweeping zoning change, and everybody's all excited about it. And that's a great thing. But when it comes down to actually developing, when it comes down to making it work there, that's our job. We have to be the ones to make sure that it works, that things are mitigated, that the traffic works, that the parking works, that all of those other things work in harmony. And we're telling you, as the people who are responsible for that, that we feel we need this tool to do it correctly. That's my spiel. I don't know if Liz, you want to add something?
I mean, I don't want to get into every specific, every specific thing, but I think you kind of covered it.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Through the chair. In a way, Barbara, I guess where I failed to wholly understand, and perhaps you guys can enlighten us a little bit, is if each property owner is beholden to their own individual mitigation, right? And they have to come before you regardless, right?
Not always, but yes.
I mean, I would say 80% of the time?
No. So let me, so the only time that site plan review is triggered in the zoning bylaw is if there is new construction. So if you are an existing business and you are going into a vacant space that already exists, that does not trigger site plan review.
Okay, so for all intents and purposes, let's talk about new construction. Because I think that anything that's current construction...
I'm sorry, I just want to interject. Lisa's shaking her head no. So if we're saying it's new construction or a change in footprint, correct?
Come on up, Lisa, please.
Please. I think this is helpful, that way we lay everything out.
To the chairs and members, I respectfully disagree, because the way the bylaw is written is it's broader than that, but it hasn't yet been defined. So the applicability section, the scope of review is new construction, additions, and any new use or change of use within the district that involves significant modifications to existing structures, okay? Significant modifications is to be defined in the guidelines that the Planning Board is to adopt, which aren't done yet. They're going through that process, they're not done yet. And they're supposed to define significant modifications. That was done, actually frankly, at my suggestion in the drafting of the bylaw at the end, when I was concerned about what triggers this. And that there needed to be something clear that the Planning Board could define. And so that's up to the Planning Board to define, which they haven't yet done. So that's clear on the applicability. I just want to be clear that it's not just triggered in new construction.
So, through the chair. So if those guidelines aren't defined, what is the mechanism of protection? And if an applicant puts forth, you know, they want to build a hotel, we don't have guidelines yet, how is that going to protect us if we don't put in some type of mechanism to protect us that we do have defined?
You need to adopt guidelines. I mean, there's actually, they've been prepared, as you know, you all have them, right? So they've been prepared, I presume they've been provided to the Planning Board from the consultant of the town. So the guidelines need to be adopted for the bylaw to have all of the details. So the bylaw is a higher-level document, and the way the drafters, there's a consultant that drafted it, right? The way the drafters envisioned it is that here's the high level, and then the details are in the guidelines, right? So once the bylaw kicks in, you apply the bylaw, and then the more specifics of each section are defined in the guidelines. But there is, to Barbara's point earlier, there is a concern today, and even after you adopt the guidelines, about a brand-new hotel, right? Like, let's say, what, let me just...
An example, yes.
Right, but it is actually the clearest example, because I think the other ones, I think the other ones are addressed. But that's the clearest example. So if you had a brand-new hotel on an empty lot, right? Currently, this is new construction, so it triggers this document, but it doesn't trigger a special permit unless they ask for a waiver. So it triggers the review, the plan review, under the new mixed-use zoning, which is significant. And I think that one of the things that, that I think, I don't think you meant to miss this, but I wanted to make it, remind everybody, and again, this was Melissa and the team's job, I mean, product. But the goal wasn't just to make things more efficient, or easier, or to allow more uses and encourage people. The goal was also to get improvements, and public realm improvements, right? Which are difficult in both the site plan review process and the special permit process, unless in the special permit process, you can show a connection, right? So the idea under here was to have a fulsome design guideline and bylaw for the entire area, that if you were going to do certain significant construction, you had to also, in order to get that process, not a special permit process, a site plan review process, you had to give something back to the community. You had to design your building in a certain way. You had to improve your sidewalks in a certain way. You had to have so much open space on your property. So it's a bigger-picture thing, and I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the conversation. And it's not to say that there shouldn't be tweaks in this document moving forward. All zoning, when it's brand-new, even if it's just a recodification, things get missed. You go through a process, you're like, "Oh geez, I should do that," right? Things should be tweaked, but that's, I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page for discussion purposes, under the purpose and the applicability section.
Thank you. Through the chair. So I appreciate the clarification. I don't think that changes my argument to you, Nick, which is that by taking away the discretion of the Planning Board, you put us in a weaker position in terms of negotiation, and there's less we can do to deny undesirable uses.
Okay.
An example?
Well, not just yet. So I guess if I'm hearing both of you correctly, it doesn't weaken the position of the Planning Board so long as you have the regulations and guidelines in place that you'd want to see were to not be under special permit. Am I roughly correct in stating that?
Yes, that's correct.
I actually don't agree with that, though. I think it does weaken our bargaining position.
Barbara, I'm, well, when you say bargaining position, what are we bargaining over?
Probably mitigation.
What, mitigating what? Sorry. Mitigating is a very, very broad term. Like mitigating what?
Depends on the project. But down there, it's going to be really important that we're looking at mitigating traffic problems, both traffic flow and a lot of traffic, and trying to make sure that the uses work together as a whole. And we have a little bit, we have discretion through the special permit process that we don't have through the site plan process.
Okay. So then, I guess jumping way ahead in my thought of conversation, I reviewed what Jeremy had sent over in his email to everybody. And I think the one thing that kind of stuck out to me was, and Liz, your response, was that right now we've got two tiers, right? We've got kind of how we mitigate through the chair with like the minimal adjustment, and then we've got the larger tier two, which kind of seems to cover everything else.
The tier, but the tier three was like rezoning. So if you, the tier three would be a rezoning or going, changing the bylaw?
Right. Right. I mean, past that, the two functional more ones that we're playing with, right? Tier one and tier two. I guess then I would ask, you know, the Planning Board to consider another tier that these regulations might fit in, that would kind of get more of what you're looking for in terms of mitigation concern, coupled with some additional flexibility, that I believe the intent of this rezoning had at its heart, given everything that was put into it when we prepared it. So that way, we don't have to put everyone through, call it a traditional special permit. Now, I could be talking out my left ear right now, because I don't know what you guys know, right? But I sit here and say, you know, this is probably the first time where an economic development director for the town of Burlington has been able to bring something like this forward, and it's forced our boards to kind of have to reconcile where things all kind of sit, which I think is good. I think it's, I think a lot of us have talked about the need for additional collaboration and communication between our boards for years. So I'm not opposed to any of this. And I think that some of the things in the article for town meeting are valid, you know, but I think that in part, what's being proposed goes against the nature of the rezoning, so soon after the rezoning. And I would love to consider just a pause, so we can have more of this conversation. Because I would even say that like Sarah and I both serve as liaisons to economic development, one or both of us would probably, not to put words in your mouth, would be happy to work with Planning to talk about those regulations and not just put it on Melissa and Liz to figure out, so...
Well, if I may, through the chair. It won't be just on Melissa and Liz. We're going to, we would put together a subcommittee, you know, that involved Planning Board members, Select Board members, of course. And I understand what you're saying, but what you're suggesting is sort of, it makes sense in the long run, but it's creating a new process, or in new levels of processes. When we have a process that works, and I think that brings me back to, I do believe there's a misconception that special permits are extremely onerous, and they're not. And they work really well. They've been working for the town for decades, and we've had some really great projects that have come through, through the special permit process. A lot of them down at Third Ave. It works. So can we create a different process that gets to the same thing? Probably yes. But we have a process that works.
May I?
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you. And I think everybody kind of knows, I expressed a lot of my thoughts at the last Select Board meeting, and I totally appreciate and respect everything the Planning Board does, and you absolutely have the authority and power to bring this warrant article forward, I think, when it comes to the special permit process. And I think Jeremy alluded to this a little bit in his emails, maybe. But I understand your stance, that it's not an onerous process, but there is a sense in the business community, when you see certain uses are special permit, people, companies pull back and, or pause. And maybe it's not known to the Planning Board, but it's known elsewhere in town. And it does happen, you know, there, and with one extra meeting, there is, you know, may seem minor to the board, but it can mean significant cost, time for proponents, including, you know, all the prep work for, all the permit and legal fees, all of the input they have to get from experts, and, you know, any delays having to do with, you know, submissions and appeals. So those issues may be manageable for a big company, an organization to deal with, but maybe not so much for a smaller business. So when they see uses that were, you know, not special permit, becoming special permit, then that sends a message to the business community, where we had previously sent a message that we were, you know, welcome and come on in, and now it's like, well, pump the brakes, we're going back on that. So that's my concern with going about it in this manner. I understand the concerns around mitigation, traffic, all of those things. The guidelines and standards that, you know, were proposed with the mixed use are very in-depth, including, you know, rigorous design and sustainability standards, covering the gamut. I understand there are concerns about maybe certain operational issues that are not addressed, and that maybe we can be more proactive about addressing those. And like, what, so what are those? I heard the example of dumpster pickup at 4:00 a.m. There's no way to prevent that, something like that. So, okay, if that's a concern, let's get a bylaw in place, or something like that. There is, okay. So anyway, that was just a good example that was proposed at our meeting. So those are my concerns with this. I think better communication and collaboration needs to happen, just in general, between these boards, because this mixed use was a huge deal. It was very recognized across the state, and, you know, very much accepted by town meeting as it was. So to me, I just wonder about the messaging that this, approaching it in this way gives, and whether there's another way we can do it. So that's all.
Through the chair. A couple things. I'm not quite sure what type of real estate was discussed in Jeremy's letter. He is supply chain, I believe it's warehouses, so I don't know that that really aligns.
He has a history with the restaurant industry.
Okay. I'm not aware of that. So, I mean, I've been managing real estate for 25 years in commercial facets. At the end of the day, when I look at a property, I'm looking at the return and the investment, and that's just one point. Second, we haven't adopted the guidelines, so that is a concern. That's not to say that the board is going to approve or agree with all the guidelines that are presented to us. So again, now we're at a point where we still need to go through that process. What do we do for protection now? One of the property owners has already said that they want to build a hotel. Not having a special permit doesn't give us any type of discussion point of what type of hotel goes there. We could have a, I'm going to use a name, Ferns on Route One. Are they going to put that there? Probably not, but the potential is there. We don't have any mechanism to guide the owner. I'm not saying that there isn't a point in time where we can't have a tiered zoning. I think until we get to that point, and have that discussion and collaborate, we need something to protect us for this point in time. And a special permit will allow us to do that. And, you know, if all of us report to somebody, you know, report to somebody at our office, unless you work for yourself. If you went to your boss and said, "I need this tool to do my job," how are we, that's basically what we're doing. We need this tool. And the voters have voted us in because they believe we're going to do the best job, and we're asking for this tool. So I think that the guidelines need to be a discussion point, collaboration needs to be a discussion point. I think it also needs to be put on the record that there was more than 10 instances where it was discussed between economic development and Planning Board professional staff, that we wanted a special permit, it wasn't put in, that was faltered, I think, on different parts, but, you know, we are here and we need to move forward. The project as a whole was voted 4-3 against the rezoning. But the one thing I can say, it was unanimous to put the special permits forth by the board. So I think there's value in throwing that information out.
So I just want to chime in now. So I'm a little confused that, I hear that you say you need the tool for a special permit. And this is a project that Melissa has worked on for two, three years, has been vetted and checked, and I've never seen, what?
And Liz.
Oh, and Liz, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and Liz. I'm sorry. My apologies. And Liz, I apologize, everybody. And the article was put in the required 90 days before it was supposed to be. And this seems like a lot of change for an article that was just overwhelmingly passed, and the ink is barely even dry, and we're making a lot of these changes. If they're so needed, like the special permit in the hotel, how was it missed? That it just went through, and it was discussed on town meeting, and town meeting vetted it, and overwhelmingly approved it, now we're going to go back to town meeting in a few nights and say, "Actually, we want to change it to this." So I'm just trying to get a grasp on, why can't we at least, if it's that needed, maybe pause, withdraw, and come back in September, and make a plan, and make a subcommittee, and try and fix it? Or what happened to get us here that we need such a drastic change within like three months?
Through the chair. I think one thing is, there was miscommunication, I think, through departments. I think there was a lack of collaboration. I think some parties wanted things, and other parties wanted other things, and it wasn't heard. But you saw the last notes, and we presented you the last notes that were presented from planning to economic development. And I think that it was assumed that the changes were going to be incorporated, and I think there's lessons learned here. Again, we can't go back. I don't think, I want to be clear, I'm not saying that it's going to be special permits forever. I think we do need a subcommittee. I think we do need to look at the guidelines. I think, you know, frankly, I think we need to redefine what a site plan is versus a special permit, because right now, they're supposed to bring in 12 Mylar copies. Clearly, they don't do that. The last time that those two terms were looked at was 2012. So we have a lot of things that maybe while it was worked on for two or three years, there was things that clearly weren't focused on. And so if we look at definitions, guidelines, what we can do in the future, but if we don't do something now and immediate, we can, we run the risk of somebody like, you know, one of the property owners putting in an application for a permit, and now, for a hotel, and then what do we do? Our hands are tied. So what I'd like to do is put this forward, and then get this committee together, and you have my assurance that we will, if we can, and everybody can have a meeting of the minds, loosen the belts a little bit. But right now, if somebody puts an application in, we have no leverage. And for a special permit, I think if, we were just talking about the breakfast restaurant the other day, through the special permit, and what we negotiated getting a new trail for Melissa's efforts because she wanted a trail. There is value in having special permits. Every other area of the town has special permits. I think we can do better, not just on this district, but I think as a whole. So again, I'm asking to have your support to put it forward now. Let's have the committee, let's look at the guidelines, let's work together and do better at communicating. And then we'll take a step back, once all this is done, to ensure that we are providing the best service and best opportunities for our community.
I'm going to go to Attorney Mead. Are our hands tied? Does this have to be done now? We can't wait till September? This is a critical error we made that was overwhelmingly passed? Can you clarify?
So I want to be clear. If you got an application for a hotel motel today, and it was a special permit, you wouldn't have the authority to say, "We don't want an Avid, we want a Hilton." You don't have that authority, even in a special permit, right? So, right? It's the use, it's not...
The use.
Right? So let's be clear about that.
Thank you for clarifying.
I mean, you could express, obviously, in any instance, like, we really don't want to do that. But here's the interesting thing...
Can I just stop you just for one second?
Sure.
Just so you can explain this to me? And I apologize for the misinformation. If they were saying that they were going to put something in that we didn't want, a special permit gives us the opportunity to decline the use as a whole.
If you, right, but because it's not the brand that you don't want, that's not one of your criteria, in a special permit. So, but if they were to apply today, they would fall under this. And one of the reasons that you probably... And one of the reasons that you probably wouldn't get the lower level hotel, right? You would get something else, is because of what is required to be done in this process. It's a lot of funding in order to create all of the public realm, to, to meet the mass complete streets requirements, to meet your criteria for approval, which would include a traffic report, right? How many times in site plan review, you don't ask for a traffic report in site plan review? You're allowed to because you have to show that the internal circulation and egress shall provide for traffic, safety and access to and from minor streets. Servicing one family dwellings shall be minimized, right? So you have a right to do that. I'm sure you ask for traffic reports in site plan review all the time, right? So you would apply your same criteria for site plan review and all of this applies. So it's not true that you're gonna be left, you know, standing there without your clothes on, right? The reality is, there's a lot of clothes on here, right?
There is.
You're gonna be really warm. So there's, there's a lot that they have to do in order to comply with this for new construction. I just want to, I want to be clear, there's not, the town isn't left standing in the cold, right? If somebody were to come in for new construction today.
Understood, through the chair. Understood that, that, what is in place right now, but that doesn't mean that the property can't be transferred to another entity at a different point in time than add in, you know, other uses. I'm not just talking about the hotel as it stands right now. What happens later on if we don't change some of these things?
Well, you have to follow, right, you have to follow the, the example was a hotel today, right? So just like any other property, if it changes its uses later on, you gotta follow the process. And even if you don't have guidelines today adopted, which you should, you still have to follow the bylaw. It just becomes a little more difficult to apply because these are broader standards as opposed to the more specific standards that the guidelines provide. So if somebody, if I applied today, you couldn't tell me I can't apply because you haven't adopted the guidelines yet, but you ought to adopt the guidelines.
Understood. And again, through the chair, it's my understanding that the site plan falls under case law and not general law. So unless there's a case to be had, then if applicant comes in or there's something that happens after the fact, we can't go back under mass general law. We only, we can only abide by case law. Is that correct?
Right. But and do what? I don't understand the question.
If there's, if there's a dispute. If there's a dispute of any kind.
You can enforce the permit.
We can enforce the permit, but it's gonna...
Sure, you can enforce the permit and you can have the permit recorded. Just change your regulations and require everybody to record their site plan review.
But we haven't done that yet.
But you can.
We can.
You can next week.
So we haven't gone through these guidelines. We don't even...
But I mean, you have a right today, even without this, to require your site plan review decisions to be recorded. You have a right to do that. And then they bind the property and the building inspector can enforce those decisions, even if they're not recorded.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, through the chair.
So, through the chair. So, so because it's not in mass general law, it's up to a judge to decide whether or not the condition is reasonable.
Yeah, but it's up, even if somebody appeals a special permit, that's still, it's still up to a judge. Any appeal is gonna be up to a judge. It doesn't matter.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So he was with Joe, I guess he got through me. How does a moratorium work? I don't know how it works. Is it through the building commissioner? If we were to put a moratorium on that one piece of property until September, until after September, until we go through this together as a board, as two boards together? Could that, that would not work, right?
No, you have to, it's a...
I see where you're going. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Wait a minute, let me finish.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So my thing is that I'm not in favor of the special permits because I've talked to a couple of the builders that happen to do quite a bit of work up there. And they're like, "This is crazy. Every time we go in front of it, it's this, it's this, this." It is what it is. I don't know what you do up there. I don't ask, I don't, it's, "I'm on this board, you're on that board. You do your thing, we'll do our thing." But now we finally got together, which I think is a good thing. And I'd like to see it wait till September, to be honest with you. That's gonna be my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Mead said no, so we can't do that.
You can't do that? They can't wait till September?
Do a moratorium.
Okay, the moratorium's out. Okay, wonderful. But they can hold off till September, right?
I can answer the question. A moratorium is a zoning change, so you can't, you can't do that. It's a zoning change.
I know, that's why I asked.
You can't do it on one property.
Okay.
And of course, anybody with the zoning on the, on the warrant, that it could be passed over if the proponents requested it.
Okay.
So I think in, in line with what Joe is thinking here, I'm gonna add on to this for a second. So knowing that there's work to be done and that we want to do it together and that we're looking forward and not backward, I guess I'll, I'll propose this, right? Would you be willing to amend your article heading into town meeting to, you can keep the special permits on hotels, hotel residents, motor ho, hotel or motel and swimming pools, but for performance theater centers, supermarket restaurants and food hall or public market, we leave them yes by right? And that way, for the, the areas that you're more concerned, which I think hotels are a big one for all of us, you would get your special permit now through town meeting and together we could have a discussion with town meeting when this comes up to say, "There's work to be done. This will probably come back before you with additional changes. However, in the meantime, we'd like to propose this, these changes, right? You keep special permits on some things, but you relinquish them on others and then we can have a further conversation."
So am I, through the chair, if I understand you correctly, you're suggesting that we keep, we move the article forward with special permits only on hotels, motels, residence motels and not the others?
And swimming pools.
And swimming pools.
But then everything else was saved by right as it was voted on in January?
Markets, performance theaters and food halls.
And restaurants.
And restaurants, okay. Is there, through the chair, is there a reason why we're saying keep those out?
Because based on what I'm understanding Attorney Mead's saying, there seems to be strong enough mechanisms for things that don't currently exist, right? And none of those things, well, I should say, none of those things that would be new, meaning like new, new construction, currently exist, right? We don't have a food hall, we don't have performance theater. The restaurants we do have are already restaurants, right? So there's, in my mind, there's no reason that they need to currently stay as special permits. They could live as by right. And I think that we'd be okay till September with any applications that might come through. Whereas the bigger things, like, we'll all say it, we're concerned about a hotel going on a silence property, right? Or Macy's, wherever it's gonna go. I'm, I agree with that, right? Let's, let's keep a special permit for now until we can have more discussion. So my ask is to maintain some flexibility as a show of good faith, right? Move some things to special permit till we can have a further discussion. And then we have the further discussion.
I'm open to all, but I think theaters.
Why?
I, you never know what, I don't know, I'm just thinking...
It would be new construction, so it would, it would have to go through a full site plan review.
No, you couldn't put a theater in anywhere. Black box theater can go anywhere.
What do you mean? It can go anywhere.
Crate and Barrel Store.
It would require a heavy renovation of the space for it to work.
And then that would...
And that would trigger a site plan review.
Internal changes.
And that would trigger a site plan review. So I think under the current mechanisms, we would have the right latitude to do, again, I don't think any of this is gonna happen in the next six months, gang.
I understand, but, well, I mean, this, I'm sorry, through the chair, there's already been discussions about a hotel.
And, and that's why I'm saying, a hotel can go a special permit, right? So like, I'm trying to meet you guys in the middle here, right? Is that like, let's, let's take a couple of things off the table and let's further discussion.
So, through the chair, I, I am open to a compromise. I will let my other board members, you know, speak for themselves. I definitely think the hotels, motels, to your point, those, those things are more concerning. I think that the theater's still a little concerning for me, but I will let the, the other members speak.
Well, you're working on that.
Well, yeah. Well, I, I guess, and what I, the reason why I say theaters is because it's my understanding that the Burlington Theater, their lease is up for, up for, their lease on the property is up for renewal.
Okay, so then it would, it would still be a theater though. I mean, that's...
No, but, no. They would, if they're not going to renew there, they're gonna be, they could potentially come across the street. I don't know. I, I'll let the other member speak.
Wasn't restaurants one already that you, you both kind of agreed should be special permit?
No.
No?
Should be or should not be?
Well, should be.
Well, what's interesting right now is that fast food is special permit, but restaurant isn't.
And fast food's not listed on here?
No.
Right.
Because I wasn't changing it.
Right.
Right. So I've actually, this is more thinking out loud because I under, I'm, I'm open to compromise. So question for, for Attorney Mead. I understand that the site plan review is triggered. And you had read that language to me. Suppose, just as an example, whether, maybe not be likely, but suppose that the Crate and Barrel Store then becomes a restaurant. They don't change the footprint. What you were explaining to me, Attorney Mead, was in that language that you read to me, there were definitions that we would have to create so that that would trigger a special permit. Because suppose it was, you know, the Crate and Barrel Store is pretty big, right?
Right.
Doesn't have a whole lot of traffic. But say they put in a Cracker Barrel, 200 seats.
Sure.
That's a big change.
Yep.
I think, if I understood you correctly, you were saying we would have to define that term, what was it?
Significant, yeah.
In order to make that trigger a site plan.
Right.
So it's not just change, it's a change of use that something to the structure, what was, can you read that to me?
A new use or change of use within the district that involves significant modifications to the existing structure.
To the existing structure.
So that would trigger a site plan review, correct?
Right. So my concern...
But they need to define, and you could, if I could, through the chair, you could do this piecemeal, right? You could define significant modifications today, right? In a meeting, right? You could do that ahead of adopting the full guidelines and say, when the guidelines are adopted, this is what significant modifications is gonna be. So you could get that adopted. So you could have it fall into that.
I understand that. My concern lies with the phrase "to the structure" because I'm afraid that a clever lawyer would say, "Well, we're not changing the building. We're not changing the structure. We're just changing what's inside of the structure." I don't know if that would work in court. I'm not a lawyer. I could see a lawyer making that argument.
Sure.
Now, in general, I agree that there are instances in which we might not want to have special permits for some restaurants. For example, when Burlington House of Pizza turned into Nick's Place, does that require a special permit? I would, would not want to see that happen, right? So sort of like uses, I think we can agree, we don't want that to happen. But when it's a really big change, like the one I described, I think we, we do get a lot of protection from the special permit process. I'm opened, I want to hear from my other board members who are here and, and from staff to see what they think. Through the chair, one more thing. I think that what Attorney Mead is saying is that we can define significant change in the guidelines. And so with that definition, we can elaborate on if it's interior, exterior, so on and so forth. So I think that that would cover us in the guidelines. So I think, I'd like to hear, to your point, what the other members of, of the planning board think, but I am open to, you know, compromise and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone, Greg? Jessica?
Okay. I think this is an interesting position for me to be in as the only board member that voted in favor of the mixed use. But I also voted in favor of this amended change. I did state, you know, with my vote that, and fellow board member, Ernie, did support as well in terms of, we would like to see the special permit process reviewed for those scenarios like allowing the smaller restaurants, the smaller businesses, the ones that can't afford even the, the fee of the lawyer for one meeting. But at the same time, knowing that there are some pretty large, not potential, but very well-talked-about projects coming before us before we had the chance to adopt these guidelines. And, you know, communicating with staff around their concerns. I think we all agree that we want to see the zoning, the special permit process, all of that evolve. And that is something I am extremely committed to, something that I am still, will be on the subcommittee for the design and guidelines to really help push that forward. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're really ready, that we, we don't mess up the first chance we get at a project in this mixed district. And I think that's where really my thinking came in, in supporting this change, understanding that perception isn't the greatest since we literally, it just got voted very favorably in town meeting. But I think we also need to keep in mind that there is the balance of, there are some changes allowing for some of those smaller mom and pop uses like personal services. You know, we see, we have seen a lot of those come before the board in the last year and those are very small first-time owners, not the easiest and very expensive to get started. So that's a positive change, I think, we're seeing through this as well. And I want to encourage more of those small businesses to come. I think the bigger businesses, like a hotel, et cetera, they're going to expect a lengthy, expensive project. As much as, yes, they don't want to see it, I think it's kind of some of the expectation. So I would be so thrilled to see the compromise. I think it would make a lot of sense for us to put the special permits back on those major things. I think the theater one is an interesting one. I think there's a way that we could in the next week or two or however long, get that significant definition moving and feel much more comfortable at that. But I would be really happy, for me selfishly, I think this would get me to where I would love to see it. But at the same time, I think we do need to make sure our staff feels protected and ready and we have those guidelines adopted. So just my comments.
I guess I'm the lucky one because I was on town meeting last time, so I didn't get to vote on, on the article for last town meeting of an at-town meeting, so. But I have a, a few questions regarding the whole site plan versus special permit process. And the first question I have in mind is, is it a marketing issue, right? Because if you're gonna build a 15 or 10-story hotel, that's 250,000 square feet, versus you're gonna build a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, is the, the impact of those two separate properties are gonna be completely different? And so the person coming in at that 5,000 or crack, the 2,500-square-foot restaurant, they came through in two meetings and they were approved. And that was a special permit, if I'm correct. And the only reason why it wasn't approved in the first meeting was because there was an easement question on a bike path. So the special permit on a small project should be accomplished in one meeting. And the value of the special permit is we are making, or we're ideally making our proponents come in better prepared than just the site plan review. However, the greater the project, the more impactful the project, the more difficult and time-consuming that whole special permit is going to be. So it's almost a self-regulating factor. If you've got a small property coming in and then this, and then the site plan or the special permit should not be all that difficult because whether or not you have three trees or four trees in front and it's not gonna generate all that much traffic isn't a big deal compared to you're dropping a performance center that might have 5,000 seats. Well, that's gonna be a traffic headache. And something along those lines should require that special permit. So my question, after all this is said and done, are, are we looking at it the wrong way? Instead of looking at it from an individual business operative, business market, you know, is it a hotel or a theater or a movie or a supermarket? Should be we, we looking at it from an impact perspective. So if it's from 100 to 5,000 square feet, it gets a site plan. If it's from 5,000 to 20,000, it gets something else. If it's 20,000 or above, it's a full-blown special permit. Something along those lines. I don't know if we can do it. I don't know if that's legal or not, so. But that's my two cents.
Through the chair. So I think what's important to remember is that while you have to apply the site plan review criteria to everything in the district, the application has to comply with all of review criteria to everything in the district, the application has to comply with all of this. So it's not your standard site plan review, it's your site plan review on steroids, right? So it's, does it look like this? Does it create, does it comply with the complete streets requirements? Does it comply with the open space requirements? Does it comply with the planting requirements? Does it comply with the traffic requirements? Does it comply with the parking requirements, right? So in the district, if all of these were to come in under this requirement, it's the site plan review for sure, but they still have to, the design that comes in has to meet these requirements. And you have a right to say no if it doesn't meet the requirements or to keep forming the project. However, to your point, can you decide what size, right? Should it be one-size-fits-all? Well, no, that's the whole point about defining what a significant modification is. And I think one of the examples, I had a conversation with Liz earlier, is I think you have an application in front of you where there's already a restaurant and the guy wants to enclose like 400 square feet, right? Should you make them go through this whole process? Or should in your significant modifications, you say, you know, and like you can define significant modifications more than with one line. You can say, if it's an existing facility that wants to, you know, add on or enclose less than 1,000 square feet, less than 500 square feet, then you only need to comply with, you know, X, Y, Z. So you have that authority to do that.
Okay. Not to, not to really get my fellow board members mad at me, but if the site plan review for the mixed district is that extensive, that, then why are we making a 2,500-square-foot restaurant go through something like that? That seems to be more costly.
Because the goal is to get the district to be this uniform, the idea is the design in the district, right? To be walkable, to be environmentally friendly, to get people to have less cars, to use the land more efficiently. That's the whole point of all of this.
That seems awfully onerous on a small business owner.
But you get to decide what is a significant modification, which has not happened yet.
We also wouldn't have forgotten that bike path through the chair, sorry.
What's that? No, I understand that. And that was, that was my benefit, you know.
But it's not in the district, right? In the district, the district requires certain design, certain complete streets, walking. So you wouldn't ask for the bike path in the district. What you would ask for is, does it have this public realm as part of your design? Does it have, you know, certain, you know, plantings? Does it have into consideration where the parking is? So that, you wouldn't have to ask for a bike path because they're required to provide certain remedies.
Right. So my point is, the site plan review for the mixed use might as well be a special permit.
That's right.
Because it is as extensive.
Correct.
And the thing that we're giving up by it not being a special permit is, would you tell me, the operational, the operational enforcement on our end?
And discretion.
It's not, right, it's not discretionary, like 40A, Section 9, special permit is discretionary. You ultimately have to grant this, but they have to comply with the requirements.
And that's why it was intended to have everything by right.
Right.
Because the overlay was meant to be pushing for all the things that are in there. Why double down on the overlay and a special permit when we have the overlay and that's going to get us what we want? Big picture.
Oh, I see the big picture.
Through you.
The big picture.
Chair. Yeah, just to kind of explain a couple of things because they get a little conflated. The crack had a special permit for the construction, that was new construction, and it had a special permit because it was a restaurant. So the construction is what the easement was trying to get at. The use of that restaurant, we had less of a concern on the use, we wanted the use there, we wanted the restaurant as a use in that corner. We wanted to be mindful of the layout, the egress, the parking, the siting, as well as a future look for an easement, for a hope for a better middlesex turnpike in the future that we have envisioned. So those are a couple of things. And then also with the mixed-use zoning district, it is good to keep in mind that, as Lisa and, you know, Liz has also said, that we have put in a lot of upfront expectation for development. So that's why when you have a special permit, you're not questioning the uses anymore. You know that you're inviting the hotel, the restaurant, that we want more entertainment there. We want food halls and creative uses. We know we want those, so we say yes. But when they are big and significant, and that's why we left that room to define that by planning board, when they are significant, that they have to, you know, come before you. And so how we had envisioned this is that, yes, hotel come in, but you have to site correctly, you have to meet the open space, you have to make sure engineering's happy with the traffic flow, you have to make sure that you've also put in the walkway connections to the adjacent use. And all those pieces are in the site plan. And if they're not, you add conditions to the site plan review for its approval by planning board. And it can only be approved by planning board. And so through that process, you get the same, like, almost mitigation, or what you're saying, discretion, those are the kind of terms, you don't see that.
Not discretion, it's not discretion.
So discretion would be, you could say no to the use. So if you're really concerned about the use, that, I think that's a separate conversation. But if we want the use, it's different than the form and the layout. So that, I guess that's kind of what is a little bit, you know, kind of gets conflated, I think, when we're talking about it. So I don't know if that's helpful.
Mr. Chairman.
Tony with the next and then Joe.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, like, I think we're all basically on the same page to make it better. I just don't understand why we have to rush it. Why can't we get together and come to an agreement with everything? Instead of just keep everything status quo, meet and have it ready that we're all satisfied so that none of us are walking away saying, did we not cross our Ts, dot our Is so that there are any mistakes made? Because the special process really does protect in many ways a lot of things that happen. And even the people coming in are happy that things are pointed out and said, that's right. And I've never seen anybody really upset that we've continued something or they have to bring something back. A lot of times, if everybody agrees, they just go into the planning board and we'll, you know, we will all approve it and then say so that they don't have to come back in as long as they meet all these requirements. Liz and Caleb take care of everything like that. But we've already, you know, made sure everything is correct and everything is done. I think we should all work together, I think that's a great idea, but I think, I don't think we should piecemeal it. I think we should work together and come to a real agreement, a meeting of the minds. I think everybody here is very reasonable and do it the right way. But I don't think we should do half like this, rush it through to this and do that. I think it's better to just form some meetings and let's do it the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Really?
I haven't spoken yet.
That's what we were hoping for.
No, but seriously, this is a great day for Burlington. Everybody at this table is doing the best thing for the town of Burlington. This is the first time, and I've been on the board since 2017, that we've ever had a meeting like this. You know what? We, I've heard, cooperation, more meetings, maybe forming economic planning committee?
Sure.
I know. But we're hearing the same theme, not the same, I don't, we're hearing a lot, the thing, we need to work together and we can't do it in one bite. This whole, this whole big mixed-use zoning needs to be adjusted. It's an evolving animal and it needs to be adjusted. Nick's, I love Nick's suggestion, the big animal in the room, the big, let's put that, do that, get that protected, for lack of any terms.
What's a hotel?
Hotels, hotels, et cetera. Let's take care of that. Then let's work together. We've got so many good people up here, we can work together, come back together, iron this out, cross this T, dot that I. And I think if we tell town meeting, it's going to be amended just, we met tonight, prior to meeting, this, the first time we've done it, to iron it out, to show them that we're taking the first step and working together.
Right.
Let them know there are going to be changes down the road. This was the first. As we fine-tune the mixed-use zone, definition, significant modifications has to be defined, guidelines have to be created. So we shouldn't do this whole article this meeting. We should do the big scary thing, hotel, et cetera, and then work together to fine-tune it as a team, not as two separate boards.
Through the chair. Oh, after, after Joe, could we let Liz speak, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So where I was going earlier, both of them said a lot of things that I don't have to say now. We were discussing the fact of changing the article to amend it to a certain degree, take out some things, put in next stuff, which is what we're talking about. Then we drifted off into a whole bunch of other stuff. I think right now at this meeting, we should focus on the fact that if you want to change that article to amend it to whatever it is, let's get that accomplished right now with nothing else. With nothing else except for what he said or what you want, the hotel, the theater, whatever it is. Let's get that finished. Your attorney's sitting right there, we can make sure the wording's right for it, you can amend the article, and then after that's done, we can meet and discuss everything that needs to be discussed with the same two people that were on it before, with your board, whatever it is. But I think right now, we just keep going around in a circle on what the special permit is and what we need to do. My personal opinion is we need to set the guideline for what is going to happen tonight at town meeting.
Through the chair, are we allowed to do that? Or has, does it have to be an amendment from the floor?
So if the board, you're going to make a report, which is what your report was, and then you could say, then you could have your comments, I think we need to find somebody to make an amendment from the floor of the article, right?
Greg might know a few people.
Jeff DeBonis sitting right in back.
So we can...
Jeff DeBonis sitting right in the back room.
So we can, I wondered where he was. So I can draft up an amendment, you know, it would be amazing if we got to Article 35 tonight.
That's not going to happen.
But I'm guessing I have 24 hours to draft an amendment. That's my guess. So I could draft an amendment for the board, for, you know, Mr. DeBonis, whoever's going to do it, that would be the motion to approve, and we would take out whatever it is that you all decide to take out.
Liz.
So I guess, I worked on the mixed zoning district, I believed in it, I do believe in it still. I guess I just want to put in a little bit of context. So what are we trying to solve?
Right, I don't see the point, why are we rushing this through and stuff?
No, 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 what is the problem at the mall that we are trying to solve?
Providing a hotel.
No. By having...
That's what I'm getting at.
No.
What's that?
No, my point is, is that the mixed district is great, but the mall is thriving.
Burlington Mall's thriving?
Yes.
Yes.
It's one of the most successful malls in the country.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Yeah, it is.
So, so context, so there's that. Also, context with kind of the uses in the mall and where it stands for parking purposes. There are only 51 surplus parking spaces left at the mall right now with all the uses that are there. So I just, you know, so anything, you know, so I guess, you know, if that's the, if the building inspector is going to be the one doing the, you know, deciding what meets the bylaw as far as parking is concerned, you know, that's where we're at. My point is, is that we can't deny site plan review.
Right. Can I just back up on the parking thing? If I could, Mr. Chair, just, any application has to meet the parking requirements of the ordinance, the underlying bylaw, excuse me. And if it would take away from existing uses, you couldn't do it because it would render the other use out of compliance. So just to be clear, the parking has to be, has to be in compliance with the bylaw, which is separate from the mixed-use district.
Right. So we're, my point is, we're about like three, we have, so the mall is permitting a lot of restaurants, the mall is doing great. We are never hearing from people that they can't, they can't get, you know, that it's hard to get a restaurant special permit at the mall right now. So I guess, you know, what are, what are we trying to solve for? The mall isn't, the retail has come back.
So Liz, my question to you is, if we only have 51 spaces at the mall, how do we get mixed use of passed to begin with?
They're going to, so basically, if we're going to either have to, they're going to have to come back for a special permit to, you know, prove that the use can accommodate the available parking, or parking structures are going to have to be...
Can I ask a question about the parking? Is that 51 spaces, is that including all of the component spaces for the old Lord &amp; Taylor? That's empty?
Yes, so that includes retail, the retail space, the office space, the storage space, and the restaurants.
Right, but Lord &amp; Taylor is empty.
Yes.
So it's taking up no, it's taking up no parking spaces now?
Right now.
So the 51 spaces is inclusive of a full Lord &amp; Taylor? Occupied?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, so Lord &amp; Taylor went open, only had 51, less than 51 spaces available?
No, no, the number she's giving is as if it were occupied, right?
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, so we're kind of getting low on time here.
Why don't we just make another meeting so we can do it all the right way?
We don't really have time.
I mean...
I don't know that folks have time. I think, I'm willing to delegate in my, you know, myself and whoever wants to on my board to figure out some type of potential compromise unless my board doesn't feel that they want to move forward as-is. And I will let them, I need a yes or no from you folks, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. So to repeat myself, I think either, I need a vote from my board to say whether or not do we want to move forward as-is and let town meeting decide, or do you want to have some type of meeting of the minds and a compromise until we can get to September town meeting and hash things out in between that time.
Are we, I don't know if we're allowed to vote, we don't have.
Can we take it off the record vote?
It's a joint meeting, you can take a vote.
We can take a vote.
Yeah, why can't you take a vote?
I wasn't sure because we have, I guess we do have a quorum.
Yeah. We could probably take the same vote.
Can we vote as well? Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. Just yell "point of order" from the back of the room.
Quick question. If it goes forward, I guess it's a question for you through the chair. If it goes forward as-is and it gets voted down, does that meet the statute of limitations where it can't come back for two years? Or does it change with, if the planning board voted? I'm getting conflicting information.
So here's the rule, if a zoning article is voted down, unless it's substantially changed, it can't come back for two years. Or if the planning board submits it again with a positive recommendation, it can come back at any time. So there are two criteria. Unless it's substantially changed, can't come back for two years. Or if the planning board recommends it positively, it can come back.
Lisa, what do you mean by positive recommendation?
They support the zoning change.
Majority.
So if, let's say this, let's say this got voted down today, today, let's say it gets voted down, and they want to bring it back in September, they could bring it back if the planning board says, we recommend town meeting approve this.
Okay. No, she meant in the future, not tonight. Yes, we are missing two people.
I guess I also want to pull my board too, on where do you guys sit, on what do you want to do? Because I'm kind of at a loss here now. I mean, I have the proposed amendment that I'm sticking with, and if the planning board doesn't want to go forward with that, then I don't know how this board would want to move forward. Obviously, there's work to be done.
Is the proposed amendment to keep the special permit on hotels, motels, residents, motels, and performance theaters as Brenda requested, or not?
I don't, if you want performance theaters, I really don't care.
I'm just, I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with, like, I mean, unless anyone feels strongly about it. Again, I don't think a performance center is going to go flying in there the next couple of months.
They're knocking down our doors.
You know, but, I mean, I could be, I could be wrong.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I want to compromise. I think it's going to be very important that we get together as a group, we're going to have to work... We're gonna have to work really quickly on all of these things to get them done by September, and I do think they need to be done by September. Because there are, are there things that could go in there that are undesirable besides hotels? So, I, that's, that's all I have to say. And I'm concerned about being able to do it by September.
Hotels, motels, Holiday Inn, and what?
Yeah. It was, it was as, as listed, it was hotel, hotel, residence.
Yes. So, I think, I, I need a yes or no. Would you prefer to move forward as is? Or do you wanna, we'll figure out this compromise, you know, either tonight, tomorrow, before we present?
Well, that's what I need to know, is hotels, motels, residences, and swimming pools, and the performance theaters, or no?
Oh, correct, so, Mr. Priest, if you would kindly repeat.
So, the only things that would remain as by right would be supermarkets, restaurants, and food halls, or public markets. Everything else can move special permit for now.
I don't think any of those are coming through. Well, restaurants might, but.
Restaurant, I mean, we, that's fine.
Right, I mean.
Personal services would be yes.
Yes.
That would stay the same, yes.
Are you okay with that, Barbara?
In the interest of compromise, I can, I can settle for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Compromise, yes, but I do think we need to meet.
We will, that's fine.
And you guys, you.
I support Nick's amendment.
Joe. Sarah.
I'm sort of gonna stick to my principles on this, and just the intent around the mixed district, and the level of detail that is in the bylaw right now. I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of fear being put out there about what could be, when there are very strict guidelines and standards, height, you know, the, how the facade is looking and facing. The level of detail in the, in the bylaw as is, I feel like can allay some of those fears. So, I, I now stand alone in this on principle. I, I don't support it. But that doesn't mean we don't have, you know.
You can. And I am in the interest, I'm kind of against it, but in the interest of compromise, I started this meeting saying, I wanna work together better, work together better, and I wanna stick to that. And so, I am all about us working together and finding middle ground to get what we all want.
So, may I ask a question?
Yes.
If we decide to move forward as described by Nick, would it be fair for me to expect that the planning board, the select board, and the economic development department would present a united front about this to town meeting?
If I may, I'll say yes with the caveats that we've discussed. Right? I think that we should have, like, we should say, yes, we're in favor of, the town meeting voting in favor of this when it comes up. However, there's a lot of work to be done. We're working, like, I wanna make sure that, that town meeting has the full context to what we're trying to achieve, and that this is, you know, us working, the beginnings of us working together.
Should we ask the economic development director if she also feels the same way?
Yes, I was going to do that.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, how you feeling?
With the compromise?
Yes.
I'm gonna go with compromise on it.
Okay. I'll take that for now.
Liz.
Liz.
Compromise.
This is, this is good. We're working together.
Always better than backwards.
Jim called it a great day for Burlington.
We're working together finally.
Appreciate that.
All right, so.
Did we define that subcommittee now?
Sure.
Just because we wanna move quickly?
We want. Well, we have.
Jim, you could have this meeting and those people to get together with the board and look at this, just what's gonna be put out there.
Yeah, 'cause I think school committee needs this.
We're already, we're already, we know what you're looking for, and we know what Nick has written down. If we get into the whole discussion of the whole group again.
Yeah.
I can do an amendment and send it to Liz and.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen tonight.
And then you guys get it out. I have. I can do it.
If you would kindly send it to Mike and I, because I think, I mean, copy them, but I think it should be us in the meeting of the minds, considering. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for all working together, and hopefully, we can continue this. A good first step.
Motion.
Motion. Uh, whoops. Should we gotta vote it?
I think you might wanna vote it, just so everybody's confirmed.
Nick, you wanna make a motion?
Are we doing two votes, the planning board and the select board?
Yes, two separate votes. You, that you can act together on this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that the select board support Article 35 with the amendment that hotel, hotel residents, motor hotel or motel, performance theater or center, and swimming pools will move to special permit, but everything else in that list will remain as by right.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Obstained. Chair is an aye, that's 4-1 for the select board. Brenda, do you wanna take a vote?
May I have a motion, please? I, can I say so moved, the same thing Nick said?
Absolutely.